I thought it'd be a little bit more than what it was.
Yeah, well, we only got eighty percent. Congratulations for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. To the people of our nation, one nation under God. The Lord is the great and just law.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacqua.
Here.
Director Vla Pignotello.
Here.
Director Finance Hurwick.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Baker.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Cranick.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Traifus.
Here.
Ward One Councilman Biassiata.
Here.
Ward Two Councilman Frondorff. Ward Three Councilman Kukrow.
Here.
Ward Four Councilman Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties Lavie.
Here.
Building Commissioner Patardi. Engineer Collins.
Here.
Before we get started, Councilman Frondorff had something that came up last minute. So I'd like to make a motion to excuse his absence. A second, please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Frondorff has been excused. One other quick little thing before we start. Our Assistant Clerk Lisa Plisco asked that we make it a point to speak clearly into the microphones. The mics were at a distance, don't pick it up on the recordings, and it makes it more difficult to transcribe. So please be cognizant of that when speaking. Okay, council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding anything on our agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 101-2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we amend ordinance number 101-2017 to remove the emergency clause.
I second a motion.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
The emergency clause has been removed. We will now read ordinance number 101-2017 for its first reading.
Ordinance number 101-2017 introduced by amended ordinance, excuse me. Introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traifus, Frondorff, Baker, Cranick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a five-year lease agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio with University Hospital's Parma Medical Center for the purpose of leasing 750 square feet of office space along with non-exclusive use of the public recreational space, including the pool, locker rooms, and community rooms in common areas within the recreation center and the common areas and public parking areas on the premises within the Seven Hills Community Recreation Center to University Hospital's Parma Medical Center formerly known as Parma Community Hospital for use by physical therapy patients, period.
Ordinance number 101-2017 has been read for its first reading. We'll now move on to ordinance number 102-2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I'm with you, suspend the rules under charter and read ordinance number 102-2017 by title only declaring emergency.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 102-2017 introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traifus, Frondorff, Baker, Cranick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a $100,000 loan agreement with 4141 Alliance LLC for the purpose of constructing improvements to the fourth floor of the building located at 4141 Rockside Road in the city of Seven Hills in anticipation of Sosius leasing approximately 5,000 square feet of space in said building and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 102-2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I'm with you, we pass ordinance number 102-2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 102-2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 103-2017. Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance 103-2017 by title only for its final reading.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 103-2017 introduced by Councilman Traifus, Frondorff, Baker, Cranick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio in an amount not to exceed $81,903 to serve as the authorized representative of the city and supervise the execution of the East Hill Circle and Mapleview Drive Water Main Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 103-2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council.
No, it's not working.
Mr. Chairman, I move that council passes ordinance 103-2017.
I second. Is there any discussion?
This is Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I just want to note for the record that 89,000, I'm sorry, the 81,000 that we're appropriating today, we anticipate to get back from the Water Department at a later date.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 103-2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 104-2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Baker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance 104-2017 by title only for its first time and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 104-2017 introduced by Councilman Traifus, Frondorff, Baker, Cranick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio with Independence Fence Company of Seven Hills, Ohio for replacement repairs and installation of fencing with appurtenances at the City of Seven Hills Service Garage appropriating an amount not to exceed $8,000 for said services and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 104-2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Baker.
I move that we pass ordinance 104-2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 104-2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 105-2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we amend ordinance number 105-2017 by increasing the amount not to exceed from $12,864 to $17,595.
Second a motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 105-2017 has been amended. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance 105-2017 by title only for its first and final reading.
Second a motion, Mr. Chairman. Before we do that, Mr. Law Director, do we have to replace the agreement?
Yeah, we do.
So we need to make another motion to amend again and insert a new.
We just got it right.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. President.
Let's, Rich, if this isn't okay, let me know. Let's make, let's vote on amending it as we did to make another motion after that. Okay, so is there any discussion on amending the amount?
We agreed to that and we were on a reading by emergency title only.
Okay.
I'd like to further motion to amend the contract, well, first, I'd like to motion to waive the 24-hour rule and add a revised contract noting the $17,595.
I'll second a motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 105-2017 has been amended. Now is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under charter and read ordinance 105-2017 by title only for its first and final reading.
Amended ordinance.
Amended ordinance.
I'll second a motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 105-2017 introduced by Councilman Traifus, Frondorff, Baker, Cranick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio with Green Systems of Westlake, Ohio to convert, convert a majority of existing T8 tubes and incandescent lamps to LED tubes at City Hall, the service garage, and the recreation center, authorizing an amount not to exceed $17,595 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 105-2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we pass amended ordinance 105-2017.
I'll second a motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? I'll say is that's what happens when we take a few weeks off. Yeah. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 105-2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 106-2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I'm with you, we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 106-2017 by title only for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I second.
This is the same thing, we have a new exhibit to add that Stuart passed out.
New Exhibit A.
So we're gonna have to amend to add a new Exhibit A, the one that was passed out in the caucus room.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I would move that we amend the ordinance number 106-2017 by adding Exhibit A.
And waiving the 24-hour rule.
And waiving the 24-hour.
Second.
Please, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 106-2017 has been amended. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Cranick.
I would move we suspend the rules under charter and read amended ordinance number 106-2017 by title only for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 106-2017 introduced by Councilman Traifus, Frondorff, Baker, Cranick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement with ACOM of Cleveland, Ohio for the purpose of performing mainline dye testing, residential dye testing, and flow monitoring, monitoring of John Glenn Drive appropriating an amount not to exceed $24,985 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 106-2017 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion? Councilman Cranick.
Yes, Mr. President, I would move that we pass amended ordinance number 106-2017.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 106-2017 has passed. Moving on to new business. Confirmation of appointment of a board member to the zoning board of appeals. I'm gonna make a motion to appoint, I'm sorry, Mayor Delacqua.
Thank you. I would like to nominate for the vacant Ward Two seat on the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Christopher Brunz, who lives on Primrose.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Christopher Brunz to the Ward Two seat on the zoning board of appeals.
My second a motion.
Is there any discussion? I would like to say after this vote, welcome aboard, and we're thankful to you for your upcoming service to the City of Seven Hills. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Christopher Brunz has been appointed to the zoning board of appeals. Congratulations. Moving on to the confirmation.
I have a couple more.
Right, I'm gonna read this and answer it for you. Confirmation of appointment of part-time finance department accounts payable clerk. Turn it over to Mayor Delacqua.
Thank you. At this time, I would request that council lift the hiring freeze for the purpose of permitting the administration to hire Verona Kudelka as a part-time clerk in the finance department.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to lift the hiring freeze to hire Veronica Kudelka as the part-time accounts payable clerk in the finance department. I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Hiring freeze has been lifted for that hire.
If I may, I have a couple more.
Mayor Delacqua.
Thank you. I would request council's concurrence in the reappointment of R. Douglas Wagner to fill the new term on the zoning board of appeals through May 2022.
Is he the Ward Four seat or is he the at-large?
Well, if he is, that I don't know, I wouldn't want to speculate.
Okay.
Whatever the seat is, I'm requesting that he be reappointed to that current seat.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Douglas Wagner to his current seat on the zoning board of appeals for the next term. Second a motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondorff. Oh, sorry, Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Douglas Wagner has been reappointed to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, and one more. I would request council's concurrence in the reappointment of Gary Barwatz to the next term in his current seat on the zoning board of appeals through May 2022.
With that, I'll make a motion to appoint Gary Barwatz to his current seat on the zoning board of appeals for the next term. Councilman Biassiata.
My apologies, second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to mention that both Gary and Doug have been on the zoning board of appeals for a very long time, are dedicated to that board, and have been doing a terrific job. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Gary Barwatz has been appointed to the zoning board of appeals. Finally, there is a zoning board of appeals variance from the August 9, 2017 meeting. We discussed it briefly in caucus. With that, I'm gonna make a motion to grant applicant and property owners Joshua and Catherine Luke of 198 Skyview Drive a variance ordinance number 997.039A to allow the installation of a five-foot-high fence installed 22 feet forward of the rear building line on the easterly side of the home as shown in the drawings submitted in the application. Councilman Petro. Second a motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Variance has been granted. Council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments regarding anything at all, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Okay. Such other business as may come before council. Let's go up and down the dais. Engineer Collins.
No report at this time.
Mayor Delacqua.
Nothing further.
Finance Director Hurwick.
Nothing further.
Service Director Lavie.
No report.
Law Director Pignotello.
No report.
Clerk Sakaric.
No report.
Councilman Petro.
No report.
Councilman Kukrow.
No reports.
Councilman Cranick.
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Baker.
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate Chris and Veronica, welcome aboard, and also the reappointments of Gary and Doug.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank Director Stuart Lavie and the administration for the work they're doing towards the flood, remedying the flood situation. Also, like, thank my colleagues on council for appropriating the funds to make this possible. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The only thing I want to mention tonight is that our road program is moving along very nicely and quickly, and Dan Collins and Mark Schmitzer have been knocking it out of the park, so thanks for your work on that, guys. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Cranick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traifus.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Button up. Sounded like they were working. They were working.
Six to school.
That's, that's awesome. Thought it might be working. What happened with UPH?
They didn't show up.
Oh, is that why you tabled?
Mic ten. Mic ten. Mic ten works. Mic, mic ten. Test.
You can contact Rico, Andrea, Andrea Rico, Rico. Okay, I just keep seeing you, I'll get her tomorrow. Mayor. He takes off one year, sometimes. Did you turn it off, Stuart? Or is it still on? Oh, okay.
Mic ten. You have to talk to them.
I can turn off a little.
I turned up the game. I turned up the game. It's not right.
We're failing.